At this time, I'll call this regular meeting in Port Lavaca City Council to order on this Monday, May eighth. Six thirty two P M. I'd ask everyone to please rise. Councilman. Lord, would you deliver an invocation for us at this time?
Yes. That's right. Father, we just come before you with humble hearts. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your blessings, blessings for this country. We also thank you for the protection for this country, Lord, and I pray that we continue to bless it, protect it from those that might seek to undermine it in any way. Thank you for these citizens in this country, in this city. And Lord, I just ask that you bless this time now and that the decisions that are made here would be in accordance with your will and under the guidance and direction of your Holy Spirit. And I pray this Father in Jesus Christ's name and for his sake, and I give you the praise and honor and glory, Father, and I thank you for hearing our prayer. Amen.
Please join me in the pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republi- fireworks. One nation under God. In the vessel of justice for all.
This is flag. Honored with the justice.
I'm trying to show you just to kind of one thing under God on an invisible.
Hey, our first order of business will be presentations, which we have three proclamations today. And we're going to read them all and I'm going to begin, if we have such a great group here, with the motorcycle aware, safety awareness proclamation. Whereas May is motorcycle motorcycle safety awareness month and the U S Department of Transportation National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reminds vehicle drivers and motorists. It's safe driving and riding practices and cooperation from all road users will help reduce the number of fatalities and injuries on its highways. And whereas it is a responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country and responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. And whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle requires training, good judgment, and thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And whereas though a motorcycle is a small vehicle, its operator still has the same rights to the road as any other motorists. Allow the motorcycle the full width of the lane at all times. And whereas all citizens of our community need to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore, I Jack Whitlow, Mayor of the City of Port Lavaca, do hereby proclaim that the month of May shall be Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the City of Port Lavaca, and I urge all citizens to join with me, our council staff and employees to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. Witness my hand in the great seal of the City of Port Lavaca this the eighth day of May twenty twenty three. And we have a great motorcycle group here today. Leaders come forward and I'll present the proclamation. And if everybody wants in the picture, we're gonna have to crowd it here up front. Right here. With camera people and the Everybody wants in the picture.
Everybody get in the pictures.
That's good.
That's one of my favorites.
Always here copying. And thank y'all for doing this and keeping us in.
We'd like to thank the City of Port Lavaca on behalf of the Calabria families. Recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. For any proceedings.
Favorite people.
Thank you.
I think going harder, the police department isn't. This one, I think Jody and Colin put this one together. Oh. Heard it came direct from you. We're gonna do this for our officer. Okay, we have a proclamation honoring our city police department personnel. Whereas we recognize and honor the selfless and heroic service provided by the men and women of the City of Port Lavaca Police Department. And whereas we rely on law enforcement officers and community service aides to keep out, excuse me, to keep our neighborhoods safe, enforce our laws, and respond in times of crisis. And whereas everyday law enforcement officers throughout the nation face the threat of violence and danger routinely putting their lives in jeopardy to defend others, putting themselves at risk of injury, disability, or even death. And whereas the City of Port Lavaca has grown to be a progressive and professional law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of our Port Lavaca Police Department officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well being of our community. Now therefore, I Jack Whitlow, Mayor of the City of Port Lavaca, do hereby proclaim that the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth shall be National Police Week in the City of Port Lavaca. And I urge all citizens to join with me, our staff and employees to do their part to increase the awareness of our officers. Witness my hand in the great seal of the City of Port Lavaca. Is this, is Colin?
The way that they get lined up.
I know that one has to be Aldery, because he looks just like his daddy. See ya that. He looks just like his.
Good mother.
All right.
The camera person. But the good work, guys. It's leaving me on that bottom.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Quite well. And last, for not the least, our hardworking Public Works Department as a proclamation. I know you're a war. This is for our National Public Works Week. Their theme is connecting the world through public works. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, parks, and open spaces and services are all vitally important to the health, safety, and wellness, or excuse me, well being of all the residents of Port Lavaca. And whereas it has been demonstrated that Public Works provides the critical response capabilities, experience, and support to all levels of government and town agencies in times of natural and manmade disasters. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and Lavaca to gain knowledge and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty three marks the sixty third Annual Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. So now therefore, I Jack Whitlow, Mayor of the City of Port Lavaca, by virtue of the power vested in me, do hereby declare and proclaim that May twenty first through the twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, shall be designated as National Public Works Week in the City of Port Lavaca, and I call upon all our citizens to join with all the representatives of American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Witness my hand in the great seal of the City of Port Lavaca this the eighth day of May twenty twenty three. Wayne Schaefer, our Public Works Director, will accept this and I want to say a few words about the programs you have for that week.
Kick off Public Works Week, the baby, the two days before will be our sprinkling up event. And then the Saturday, the twenty seventh will be the public work show until like we did last year down at the Bayfront to invite all of this public down to see what we the equipment we operate and there'll be giveaways for the kids. Educational materials to teach them about water and wastewater and stormwater.
And that's, you know, we've already had our distinction here.
Hey, let's thank everyone that made it here for the presentations. Very nice. And our next order of business is to take comments from the public. And is there anyone here from the public that wants to comment on something that's not on the agenda? If we have one that wants to comment on an agenda. We have a council member. Do you want to say something?
Yes, I would like to say something is, some of you may know or not know that I do recycling here with the city and some of the people that I've seen out there have been so appreciative of what the city is doing for the employees. And some of them just expressed, you know, I love working for the city. I think it's great. I think that we need to be very appreciative, our department heads, all, all here in City Hall, out Public Works, you know, treasure, the finance director, Jody, Wayne, everybody, because the thing is, is things are changing here in the city. And I've had citizens explain that, that things are finally, they're beginning to notice that things are changing here and that we need to be appreciative. And I just want to, I want to place and everybody else to know how much I appreciate what all of you do for the city of Port Lavaca, because I think it's tremendous the gains that have been made in the last year or so, and I just, it's tremendous. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Okay. If no one else signed up to speak. All right, move on to our regular agenda, beginning with the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the April tenth, twenty twenty three, regular meeting, review of our credit card statement, receiving our monthly financial highlight report and receiving the Victoria Economic Development Corporation monthly report. Oh, move. Like everybody to take note of the report from the V E D C. It shows they've been very active for us and we're worth our money. Okay, we have a
I'm sorry, I didn't cut. Who's second?
Jerry did.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And we have a motion and second approving the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. None opposed, motion passes.
I'm glad they're energetic today.
All right. Move that now to our regular action items on the agenda. Agenda item number one, consider approval of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, prepared by the audit firm, A T O Brown and Hill L L P. Susan, you wanna tell us about this?
Absolutely. Mayor and City Council, we are required to engage in an independent audit on a annual basis of the city's financial statements. This year, we, we had the audit firm of Petio, Bourbon, and Hill perform the audit for the city, the results of the audit, and the highlights of the city's financial position were shared with the Finance Committee on April twenty fourth, and present at the committee were council members, Tim Dent, Jerry Smith, and Alan Tippett. City staff included the city manager and myself. And then we also had representatives of, of our audit firm, who were the audit partner, Al Alau, and the audit supervisor Travis Roberts Rogers. So essentially the city got an unqualified opinion, which is the highest opinion we can get on our financial statements and and the big point is attached in your, in your packet, and then I also made some independent copies there until we get the, the nice third cover. Right now, it's good and everything looks good.
Actually, I wanted to say something. I do appreciate Susan and the job they did and and this firm, it was very assuring to hear them say our city's in a really good financial position. And I think we've managed to do that over several years now, which is, and we're still spending money. We're still fixing things which needs to be done. Yet we're still financially strong. So I'm glad to see that continue. Lot of cities can't say that. Like to say thank you to Susan and the finance. Appreciate you.
Well, I appreciate City Council giving us the tools and allowing us flexibility with the budget to get these projects.
Thank you, Susan. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. So we just basically will need a motion to approve that annual.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I did it first.
Have a motion and second approving the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, as presented. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. And unopposed, motion passes. Okay, now we move to agenda item number, consider ratification of amended bank depository agreement, depository pledge agreement, and securities account control agreement between the City of Port Lavaca, First National Bank in Port Lavaca, and Pershing, a Bank of New York Mellon Company for a five-year period effective February first, twenty twenty three. Jody?
Mayor Council, you recall on January ninth, that council, the depository agreement, depository pledge agreement with First National Bank. After that time, it was determined that the pledged collateral agreement that had been provided to the bank for review in December was not acceptable to Pershing, which was the bank holding the collateral, and instead they offered a securities account control agreement. The city was provided in this, this alternate agreement. There was discussion and review. The Finance Committee was involved in this review as well, the city attorney. And everyone came to the agreement to use this securities account control agreement. But then we needed to amend the language in the depository agreement, the pledge agreement to reflect this securities account control agreement, which is what we bring before you tonight. I mean, it has all been approved, but we're asking for council to ratify that amended banks depository agreement and deposit for the pledge agreement and the securities account control agreement between the city, First National Bank in Port Lavaca, and Pershing, the N Y Mellon Company for the five-year period effective February first, two thousand and twenty three.
All that damn hat. You're dead. They're such a low.
Have a motion and a second to ratify the amended banks depository agreement, the depository pledge agreement, and securities account control agreement between the City of Port Lavaca, First National Bank, and Pershing, Bank of New York Mellon Company for three to five years. As presented, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And unopposed, motion passes. Thank you all very much. Long time getting there. Move to agenda item number three, consider appointment, reappointment of members to the pork commission to re, to to fill term expired vacancies and or start a new term. Jody?
Mayor Council, the terms of five of our four commissioners will be expiring very soon. Mike Kavarek and Jim O'Neil, who were appointed on May tenth of twenty twenty one, when the council made the decision to expand the commission to seven members. Also Larry Nichols pointed to a two-year term on May tenth, twenty twenty one, when Raymond Butler had resigned at that time. And then Alex Davila and my fire ended on May twenty fourth of twenty twenty one. All these gentlemen have expressed interest in writing, and it's in your packet, and being reappointed to the pork commission for a two-year term.
Just for future reference, Robert Knox had asked earlier to get a position on one of our boards. I would like us to keep him in mind for this. We have a physician come available later. He's very, would be a very good representative of our community.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, appointing the, or reappointing the members to our pork commission as presented. Do I need to name each one? You have them down? Okay, as presented, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. None opposed, motion passes. Is our city secretary is good. All right, we move to agenda item number four, consider resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash one of the City of Port Lavaca finding that A E P Texas Incorporated's application to amend its distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the City of Port Lavaca should be denied. Authorizing participation with the city served by A E P, authorizing hiring legal counsel, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expense shall be reimbursed by the company, and that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and the and Marie, you want to find what we're doing here?
Yeah, again, A E P is filing a right case to recover costs they've expended. This would cause approximately a dollar and thirty cents increase to the average customer's bill. However, we've generally participated with Lloyd Goslink in trying to hold these down every year. Uh, that we've had been addressed with this, and so. Uh, we did prepare this resolution, all it does is delay. For a period of time, uh, them implementing the cost on our customers. But it does not hurt, at least it delays it.
Yeah. Make a motion, we uh. Delay that. It's not, it's not also increased.
Approve the resolution as.
The resolution during. Right, then we have a motion and a second approving resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash one of the city of Port Lavaca. Finding that the A E P Texas Incorporated's application to amend its distribution prospect is to increase the distribution rate within the city. Park Rocker should be denied as presented by staff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. None opposed, motion passes, yeah. Stop reading. Right, we move to agenda item number five, consider resolution number oh five oh eight two three dash two of the city of Port Lavaca. Texas to approve the annual review of the city of Port Lavaca's investment policy and strategy, Susan.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and City Council. The Finance Committee met uh to. Review the uh investment policy, this is an annual requirement of the Public Funds Investment Act. Uh, we fulfilled uh the duties. Uh, through the Finance Committee and review the investment policy. There was one small minor, oh, I I'm not on the investment policy, we did. We did a minor. Change on the investment policy itself, but we also added the broker. Oh, excuse me, uh, that we outlined the broker dealers. That um, that we could invest in, and then we also created a broker dealer certification. So that when we send our investment policy out to these broker dealers, they also sign and. In indicate affirmatively that they will abide by and follow our investment policy and strategy when they uh acknowledge. For that. Um, so this is uh one of those things that is. Best practices with the Public Funds Investment Act.
Yeah, I'd like to know, Susan kind of updated our policies slightly, because what we're still, we didn't actually. Or at least it wasn't completely.
Motion to approve.
Yes. We have a motion.
Okay, so motion and a second approving resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three. Ask to the city of Port Lavaca to approve the annual review of the city of Port Lavaca's investment policy and strategy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Those motion passes. Hey, we move to agenda item six, consider resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash three of the city of Port Lavaca. To adopt the city of Port Lavaca's. Budgetary and financial management policies for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year, Susan.
Again, Mayor and City Council, this was a another policy, this is a a a city tradition or or a city's policy. That we bring together the um an annual review of the budgetary and financial management policy. Um, we had been doing this. In September timeframe, a little bit closer to to the crunch of the um. Of the budget, uh, uh, approval cycle and the tax rate. And we decided that it was it's best to to move this back a little bit, to have it a lot earlier, to set the stage. In case we did want to change some of our financial management policies. Um, we could do that heading into the budget period, so that's why we're bringing this to you a little bit earlier. In the year rather than later on in September. Uh, the Finance Committee met, reviewed the policy, staff didn't have any recommended changes. Um, and neither did the Finance Committee, so we're presenting this basically to. To to keep up the. Um, the the annual review, uh, as it's always been done in the past.
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to perhaps the city of Port Lavaca put their financial management.
The Jim jury.
Jim.
Jim gets. Jim wins. We have a motion and a second approving uh resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash three of the city of Port Lavaca. To adopt the city of Port Lavaca's budgetary and financial management policies. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. None opposed, motion passes, resolution pass. Right, we are now at agenda item number seven, consider resolution number oh five. Oh, eight, two, three, oh, four, excuse me, two, three, dash, four. Uh, the city of Port Lavaca, Texas to adopt the sidewalk plan as part of the city of Port Lavaca's comprehensive plan. Adopted by ordinance. Number G dash nine dash sixteen on September twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, Jody.
Uh, Mayor Council, as you recall, we discussed. And review the sidewalk plan at a recent workshop, and we had it not at the landings a while back. This is a resolution to adopt that master plan as it is presented on the city's website. Um, on our comprehensive plan page. Um, labeled Port Lavaca Sidewalk Plan. Dash May twenty twenty-three. Um, and we want to adopt this so in as part of uh the documentation that we're sending the text on. Um, for uh grant application that we're putting in, that we've got a resolution for that. Um, here coming up. Maybe the next. Gen item or couple gen items down. Um, so uh, we're requesting approval of this resolution, and again, the sidewalk plan is as was recommended. In the comprehensive plan that was adopted in two thousand and sixteen, and we're following through with adopting this resolution to adopt a sidewalk.
Some of it.
And so, and so for clarification too, what's on the website today? That will remain there, it won't change, it's been, it's been a kind of a working document. Since we've adopted this, that will stay, there will be a separate. Document that'll be the working document, and so if something changes, that that will come back to council to to update the sidewalk. The one that's on the website will be.
It actually part of the comprehensive plan or reference.
It's, I mean, the comprehensive plan. References, yes. It's a standalone resolution for the sidewalk plan, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and approving resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash four of the city of Port Lavaca. To adopt the sidewalk plan as part of the city of Port Lavaca's comprehensive plan. As presented, all in favor say aye. Those sign. And oppose, motion passes. Resolution passes, move to agenda item number eight. Consider resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash five of the city of Port Lavaca, Texas to prepare and submit grant applications to the. Texas General Land Office Coastal Erosion Planning and Response Act Cycle thirteen. And commit public funds as required for match for the following pro- projects. Harbor Refuge Protection and Restoration and Lighthouse Bee Beach Restoration, Jody.
Uh, Mayor Council, there was a lengthy memo in your packet that I'm not going to read the whole thing, that kind of gives a lot of detail. To what we're doing here. Um, the resolution um says council approves and and supports the submission of two. Keppa cycle thirteen grant applications. Um, we're looking at two projects, um. One of which we've been. Working with the pork commission for some time, and I did include some exhibits in your packet, in case you you're. Don't recall the areas we're talking about. But um, one area, they're they're all at Harbor Refuge. Um, one area is the protective shoreline along where the old um landfill used to be. And we're seeing some significant erosion that has um has caused. Um, some trash cells to be exposed, and we've done a lot of work to keep that beach clean. This project would um provide a long-term solution. Um, to uh. And. Provide some or construct some articulated map over the uh land. To provide a long-term solution for the shoreline protection along that shoreline. In addition, the uh peninsula that protects the Harbor Refuge Channel. Has seen significant erosion over the last thirty-some years. We're only a third of the width of what it was like in nineteen eighty-eight. And so, um, we're looking at a project that would pro- provide um protection along that shoreline to stop that erosion.
So if it's, on that note, will that allow them for that to gradually expand back out or just keep it from doing?
This is, this is basically to keep it, it's a lot more complicated to try to. The. Expand it, I mean, what it was originally, it actually what it was, it was the spoils, that's where they put the spoils. When they dug the harbor refuge. Um, this is gonna um. But from getting any worse, it would be a lot more complicated to try to recapture. Um. That's the proposal right now, again, this this Kepper grant application is just for the the initial engineering. Next year, we would be applying for the actual construction dollar. Okay, and if if for some reason in their engineering, we find out we could do something different, you know, we could always look at that. But right now, the proposal is just protect what's there. And thirdly. So wetlands area at the south portion of Harbor Refuge. Um, along some uh wetlands areas and our constructed wetlands area. That um. There, we're seeing significant erosion to where it's going to breach our constructed wetlands. That will no longer be a wetlands if that breach, it'll just, you know, be part of the bay. So those are the three areas that we're looking at um with this. Particular Keppa application. On Harbor Refuge side, and again, it's for um engineering dollars. These three projects, um, I had mentioned a few months ago, they were um included in the two thousand and twenty-three. Um, G L O Coastal Resiliency Master Plan. So that's good news, so with that, uh, since they're in state's master plan. That increases our likelihood of being awarded this grant. Um, because G L O has recognized that um. This is, this is a critical. Location that we need to protect. Um, so and again, if we are awarded, once we get to the construction phase and um. G L O will be paying for all the construction, and we're right, we're required about thirty percent, I think it is, of the engineering dollars. So it's a really good deal. Um, if we, if. Since it's in the coastal resiliency master plan, if we get this funded. Second project is just to do an engineering study at the Lighthouse Beach. To look at, um, we've we've also seen a lot of erosion along our wetland shoreline there. And obviously the beach itself. And we all know that we have an issue where, you know, we'll go in there and clean out the boat ramp and, you know, thirty days later even almost, it starts settling back in. So an engineering study to look at all that and see what we can do, what changes we can make to infrastructure. Uh, you know, move things around or add to the groynes or, you know, put a living shoreline along the the uh. Wetlands area that would slow down or stop that erosion, so again, that's an engineering study. Now, the required, now Kepper, you know, it's not a hundred percent, there is a match requirement. And. Yeah, on the Harbor Refuge side, for this um phase one preliminary engineering permitting and final design is what we're applying for. Our um commitment would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred dollars. However, recall that we were awarded a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the Matavorda Bay Mitigation Trust Fund. To go towards this, and I have confirmed with the trust that um they will. Uh, allow this money to go to all three of these projects, not just the one we had initially applied for. The the shoreline where the old landfill was. Um, but they will allow this funds to go for all three, so this two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar, two hundred dollar commitment. Two hundred of that will come from the trust, so our um uh. Commitment would be essentially of general fund dollars would be seventy-five thousand, two hundred. For the Lighthouse Beach Restoration Project feasibility study, commitment would be fifty thousand dollars of local match funds. None of this would be due or be owed until sometime next this year, so it's something we would budget for. You know, and we should know whether we have these, you know, prior to finalizing budget, we should know this in August approximately. Um, but the plan would be, assuming council wants to move forward with this, that we would plan on budgeting these funds um. Towards this this grant. Project, and then, you know, as far as the White House speech goes, again, this is just. A feasibility study, so that would then will come up with the project, we'll figure out, you know, what it would take, how much money it's going to take. So then we can, you know, search for grant dollars to actually do the construction. So that, so this is um. A resolution, we approve the resolution and this goes with our application.
I did have some questions, I noticed that you had photographs on the. On the Refuge Harbor and then outside the Refuge Harbor, uh, along that back shoreline, I had photographs there. But there was no photographs of the feasibility study area.
Right.
With the wetlands, when you're talking about the wetlands, are you just talking about the wetlands right there at the park?
Everything, everything the city owns, because we own.
The city owns.
Every, we own all that wetlands area out there. Um. It's west, south and west of the um wetlands walkway, all that wetlands out there, the city owns. So it would be something to look to prevent. To to prevent that from continuing to er- erode, because looking historical aerial photographs. You can see that whole line has lost, it's it's lost enough. Uh. And that um, you know, it qualifies for uh. It was, it was enough that the the engineers and Mont McDonald's, who were working with me on this, that they felt. Um, that there's a good chance that we would be awarded, that there is, you know, evidence that there is significant erosion along that shoreline.
There is.
Yeah.
I I lived out out there and and. I I can tell you the erosion is just tremendous, uh, there's private property owners that are really suffering out there. You know, I found that study.
But the, the, right now, the study is. The the public lands, what what um. City of Port Lavaca owns, oh, and that, and so I I found to mention also that in this commitment, we are also committing. To provide public access to shoreline, because that's part of it, we're using grant funds, you know, so. They don't want to be funding something that's for private. Use, these public use, so like at the Harbor Refuge, the um, the plan would be to allocate, dedicate. A um. Public access um. For right away from Green Road that would go down to the shoreline, and then we'd have a public uh. Access along the shoreline, similar to, you know, the the dock that's in front of track three down the Harbor Refuge. That's a public dock, so technically, I mean, it's available to the public. Um, but we have people that lease property adjoining that public dock, but we don't lease the dock itself. So it would be a similar arrangement for that. Any more questions, I know it's complicated, there's a lot of information in this memo, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if somebody really. Um, you know, reads a memo, doesn't understand anything. Because I mean, you know, there's a lot, a lot to digest there.
I'd like to make a motion that we uh approve resolution to preparing to pay grant applications to the Texas General Land Office. Coastal Erosion Planning and Response Act. Separate. I'll say.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second approving resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash five of the city of Port Lavaca to prepare. And submit grant applications to the Texas General Land Office. Keppa cycle thirteen as presented, all in favor say aye. You oppose, same sign. Opposed, motion passes, thank you, June. We move to agenda item number nine, consider resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash six of the city of Port Lavaca, Texas. City of Port Lavaca's application to the Texas Department. Of the city of Port Lavaca, Texas, supporting city of Port Lavaca's application to the Texas Department of Transportation. Twenty twenty-three transportation alternative set aside program, Jody.
Uh Mayor Council, we also went over this uh proposed uh project at a recent workshop. Um as you know, we are um in design, engineering design right now to make. Um improvements to Independence Drive from Virginia Street all the way to Half League. Um as part of that project, we are making an application to uh Texas Department of Transportation. Um through their alternative uh transportations set aside program. For a shared use path on both sides of Independence from Virginia Sand Crab. And then also from uh on Sand Crab from Independence downtown in front of the high school. And then thirdly, um from uh Independence. Down within the properties that um Shelton Properties owns, where the, the apartment complexes are just now being constructed. Down through that property and um ending uh coming out between HEB and Calvin Plaza. To provide a um pedestrian and bike path to where people could walk or bike. From the apartments that are there on Independence to HEB or to Calvin Plaza without having to get in a car and go drive around. So though this is the three um porch uh sections of this uh grant application. And so uh this is the resolution supporting the submission of it. Um so you understand, uh we will not be required to have a local match because of our um. Motor mon- income levels, we can use um transportation development credits. Um that are offered by Techstat, which we intend to do instead of a cash match. So that this is the resolution requesting approval of, so it can be included with the application. We are getting um uh letters of support from the, there's five properties involved. Um that we are easements from, everyone is supportive of that. Um we're working on that paperwork now, and um I'll be working to get some information, the public to get. Uh other letters of support from the community at large. Again, the school district obviously is very instrumental in this project because of um everything. On Sand Crab will be in there on their property and we'll need an easement from them. Um and I'm got that worked up, they're been very supportive and excited about the project and I'm going to be going to the. Uh school board meeting next Monday where they will approve a, a letter of support for the project.
Someone.
Second.
That's great. Thank you, Jim. Motion and a.
Yes. And it's all lighted too.
Oh, yeah, yes. Have a motion and a second approving resolution number R dash oh five oh eight two three dash six of the city of Port Lavaca, Texas. Supporting the city of Port Lavaca's application to the Texas Department of Transportation's twenty twenty-three Texas Alternative Set Aside Program. As presented, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, both motion passes. Yeah, that's going to be great for Independence. Right, we move to agenda item number ten, consider recommendation of the planning board for approval of a single lot. Final minor plat Sylvia Pena Mendoza Life Estate subdivision located at nine fourteen. Schooly Street, ad pin number five four seven oh eight, Eric.
King, Mayor and Council, uh in your packet, you'll see uh. This Mendoza submitted the final plat for her property, uh it was held off um. So that uh she could have the public works install uh water taps and sewer tabs for the quadplex behind uh her property. Um all that has been done. And so she is requesting to have the final plat approved.
I'm moving, oh, what?
I make a motion, you second it.
Yeah, I'll say. Got that Rosie made the move.
Box it out, we'll see.
All right, we have a motion and a second recommend, recommend approving the recommendation of the planning board. Or approval of a single lot final minor plat Sylvia Pena Mendoza Life Estate subdivision. As presented, all in favor say aye. Same sign, and opposed, motion pass. Hey, now for agenda item number eleven, consider recommendation of the planning board for approval of a conceptual retail store to be located at. Uh twelve oh seven West Austin Street, legal description for the lot is Berkshire subdivision lot. Hart six acre one point three two seven identified with cat number one zero zero eight one.
Eric, Mayor and Council, uh in your packet, you'll see uh. Uh see, have the printing of the uh Dewitt County Appraisal District showing the property by the proposed side. Over on Austin Street, right across from First Street, uh it's going to be right next to the dry cleaners, is what they're proposing. Um next, next sheet shows you the site plan of the building. Uh it's going to be, it's twelve thousand, six hundred forty-four square feet and has uh fifty parking spaces, which is eight more than what the city requires. And they're planning on using the parking lot for the detention of uh stormwater.
I think Justin Weaver wanted on our planning board, want to make a comment on this too.
Okay, as a citizen. As a lovely comment, I, I, I've kind of already made a stink of the planning board meeting and. But most of the staff over the last few weeks, but uh I'm surprised by this development. And uh when I found it was a dollar store, I raised it a bit slack for. And uh so I just came in and mentioned that uh a lot of municipalities, different counties or parishes in Louisiana. Have banned dollars outright from their property, uh not allowed within city limits or parishes or county limits.
Why is that?
So there's, there's several different, you know, reasons that they've done it, but uh some of them say that uh it doesn't add anything to their economies. It can actually uh prevent other businesses from coming in, especially grocery and retail stores, because these places tend to hit or to a. Lower price point when you're shopping. And uh specifically to Port Lavaca, kind of in reference to sort of around this meeting, uh Jim mentioned how much, you know, we're poised for growth. How many things are coming, coming to a head finally, I'm grateful doing financially. Uh and so I just kind of noticed that this seems like really good opportunity for a large business to come in and take advantage of that. Uh maybe not to our benefit, isn't it? And so I wanted to kind of just raise that flag and go and bring it to you guys that other communities that ban these types of status. We currently have a Dollar General across the street, there's a Dollar Tree. Uh shortly behind the Dollar General in the plaza we just spoke about with the Ultimate Trail, there was a family's closed down due to lack of this. And shortly, I won't say two more times, that one was CBS, which is another bargain and coupon centric business. And uh obviously, we don't support that much of that particular type of commerce. But it struck me and pretty much struck me a bit of a nerve, they are at twelve oh seven, right? And at eleven oh seven, it's my business. And then this down the road is another business, down the opposite direction is two more, around the corner, another business. All of which would now have to compete, all of which are owned by individual uh citizens of Port Lavaca. Just kind of rubbed me along the way and want to bring that to your attention. Typically, these kind of developments have been frowned upon in these communities. There's additional resources online, you can look and see that they have been sued for billions of dollars for discrimination. They've been listed as a, I'll, I'll misquote it, but I'm sure, but OSHA has registered them as a serial defendant. And fined them a hundred and eleven times, five years. So uh, you know, we might not be able to say who we do business with this time, I think it's important that we know. So that was my comment, thank you.
So Jared, I was concerned about, you said the, the parking lot will be uh any. Detention pond.
Yes, underneath the, not the, not the, not the, not flood the parking lot, they're going to have it on like large pipes under the, the.
Okay, so where, where, where does that, it, it's going to the storm sewer or what?
Well, if you look at the site plan.
I don't want to back it up in the neighborhood.
No, we go, we'll go to Techstat.
Oh, what it, what they're proposing to do, and I've already visited with Techstat, I'm not for sure where they're at on it, but uh they're planning on going underneath the road. And then discharging into the uh dig cro- uh on the other side. I don't think where that would be.
I mean, I think that the, the storm pipe is, is in Austin Street, an empty field in the middle on the south side of Austin Street.
Where that doctor's office is.
It's just proving the conceptual plan, we have a lot more to review.
Yeah, this, all this is.
This is conceptual.
Yes, that, that. Facility is, is.
It's just a conceptual for a retail store.
Back later and discuss some.
Well, I mean.
As far as citizens.
They, I mean, as long as they're complying with all our rules and our ordinances and, and laws and stuff, I mean, there's nothing. At this time that we have that would prevent them from coming in, but they, yes, they have to comply with all, all laws and ordinances, you know.
They, they have submitted their building plans and they've, they've been approved, um so they've got that part done. Um I've been trying to help them out and look uh making sure that there is an easement in the back of their neighbor's property uh for utilities. Uh but so far, I haven't been able to find anything and I haven't been in touch with them to see if they've uh.
Yeah, there, there is a challenge with sewer.
Yes.
Have to get an uh an easement um to go, to get out to some.
Definitely gonna need sewer.
Yeah, yes.
Out of the ease right there, then we got a problem.
Yes, sir, um they had their plat, uh their, this property was platted, I believe in, I think it was in eighty-six or something like that.
Yeah, this was, those.
And on their plat, it does reflect an easement in the back of their property, we just need to make sure that there's an easement added for the adjoining neighbor.
Yeah.
To get to the str- um, it's a secret.
I do think it's interesting, the mayor of Victoria has told me that there's something like twenty something dollar generals in Victoria. Hmm, maybe, I see that. Quite a few of them, but then you gotta realize that you've got a population of what, ninety thousand?
The county.
You know, in the county, right, and it's, it's. And I, I, I hesitate to try to block someone because if you've got word of mouth. You say, well, because we don't want this business here, whatever, then that starts. Yeah, other people start saying, well, maybe we don't want to go there because they might turn us down.
Can't do it, at least on content.
I mean, like Jody said, as long as they're following all the restrictions and whatever, I don't think it very well not. Approve it and the fact that the planning board approved it.
Okay, so their sewer, they don't have any, because they can't attach to anything behind. Because that neighborhood floods.
There you go.
That drops of rain, that's not, that's talking about wastewater, not storm, I know, but I'm still talking about storm water because. It, it has to go somewhere, it's going to go to Techstat.
Yeah, they have to.
Make sure that that.
I get.
Water doesn't back up in that.
No, let's see.
Women in their houses.
Because they already are, wait, they already are in that neighborhood. Yeah, I mean, just, well, there is not any storm sewer right there, that storm sewer is on uh Suncrest. And that's, or and actually, I'm sorry, not storm sewer, the wastewater is on Suncrest, storm sewer, there is no storm sewer. See, I mean, that whole subdivision drains by gravity on the curb and gutter all the way down. Till you get to the entrance of subdivision, that's the way it was designed originally, so there is no sign in. Yeah, most people, well, they're still having issues, that's fifty years later, because that's when I moved here, or longer.
There, there's no way that we would allow that.
They have to go to Techstat, yes. Can our town, I, and. It's two thirty, two thirty, yes, and can our town really afford another dollar store? I mean, I hate to say this, but I mean, we're not that big.
Yeah.
And it's not like the people on that side of town cannot drive the three minutes to Walmart or the two minutes over here. To a Dollar's General that they already have one.
I just don't, I do not want.
No, I understand your point of view, I'm not.
You know, I, when we.
I get it.
Restricting businesses from coming in because there are people that have told me that live on that side have said. We hate driving over there, it would be so much better if we could buy some of the stuff here, they want a grocery store over on that.
I know, one thing you gotta remember is, we don't want it to look like that uh rental store out here on the bypass, it's been shut down for so many years. So, yeah, I mean, we don't want another abandoned building.
Exactly.
That's the main thing, if the business is there, that's one thing, but I just hope they're right, because I hate to see another abandoned building setting down. You know, Victoria builds and builds and builds, but if you watch, a lot of times for whatever gets built, something else closes over there, it's, it's a known fact.
Yeah.
They don't all stay open, part of them close when other things don't, so that's, that will happen.
You know, all these family businesses or local businesses that are from our own citizens, what's going to happen to them? Of course, it's not our, I mean.
I mean, the only thing, I mean, moving, moving forward, you might be able to do something, you know, if we, we looked at some sort of an ordinance. I mean, I don't know, you know, well, even zoning though, I mean, sorry, it would be zoned for this kind of business, so that wouldn't, I know, but.
Yeah, more than likely with the zoning ordinance, Austin Street would be considered as a commercial area. Yeah.
But I know, so, so.
Drainage plan.
What?
Austin Street doesn't drain that well now, does this exacerbate the situation or is it just localize it? Because I mean, if it's all coming off that.
Okay, Techstat will require them, they can't run any more off than comes off today. So that's what the detention's for, they have all the, all the pipes under the, under the, you know, the. So they don't have room for detention pond.
It's going to be an underground, so it's act like the ditch pond is going to regulate the, the.
Yes, they have, they, they had all their storage, or this is what they were pro- pro- yeah, proposing. Because they didn't have room for a detention pond, because it's a small lot. So they, what they do is you put large pipes um in, in series under the parking lot. To store, however much water is required to be stored before they then discharge it out to Techstats.
So you have to clean those pipes out when they get sure what.
That's, I mean, they're theirs, they're not ours, would be their property, we don't even have an easement.
Same kind of setup is like the one on thirty-five is, uh they have the storm drainage in the parking lot as well. Dollar general.
Dollar general, on thirty-five, right, Aaron, it's interesting, but again, yeah, I mean, Techstat would approve all that.
That was a good question about who's going to clean it out, and how, how do we know if it needs cleaning out or not, if it's.
Well, you would know if it wasn't start, didn't start working, wasn't working.
You would know when it started flooding all them other.
Which are any glad.
You go.
The light goes off.
I think that water has to go up here before drains uh gets out of that neighborhood, because it's, it is back, so it's like a soup bowl in there.
I, I, come to my office and I'll explain, I'll show you why it does what it does, I've studied it for many years.
Ah, okay.
Engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to live in the neighborhoods to, to under, and I, and I used to live in a neighborhood too, I used to live in that neighborhood too, I know, it's right on that corner.
I know that we said that we, okay, the recommendation of the planning board for approval of a conceptual retail store.
I'm advising council at this time, but it's can, it is ministerial for you to do this. If they present something, meet your requirements, you have minister.
I, 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 I mean, I would, of course, you know, I mean, I'm short term anyway, but I'm just saying it would be nice to make sure that everybody sees the. The, the drainage concept possibly, and, and I know this is just conceptual, so. I think that should be something that probably needs to be brought back to the council to show y'all what their, how it's really going to work.
Hello, this is Casey Genovese.
Information before we can approve any.
Sorry, this, hi, this is Casey Genovese with Lynn Phil Hunter and Genius Engineers, I didn't, we're the engineers on the project, I didn't know if we're supposed to speak or not, but. Um if that's okay, I can address the drainage um.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, so we, like, 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 I think as Jody mentioned, we, we do have to meet Techstat's requirements for detention. Um and ensure that we're not increasing the flow from our site to the pre-development levels. And that water will be detained uh under the parking lot there in a detention system. Um and what we can design too, and we'll include in the plans. Um, and what we can design too, and we'll include in the plans, is just a little, a structure, basically there's a weir wall in it. Um, so it'll, it'll have a choke pipe or choke orifice that'll detain the water and reduce it to pre-developed levels. And then there'll be a weir wall in that structure on the, by the Techstat right of way. That will allow it to, if it got to a certain level in the underground basin. It would, it would overflow that wall and continue to Techstat so that it did not back up. Uh, into the Dollar General parking lot nor the, the neighbors or the adjacent properties. So it kind of, it twofolds, it ensures the flows are actually reduced, um, to less than pre-developed levels. And at the same time, there's an emergency. Overflow weir wall that allows it to overflow, uh, directly to the Techstat right away. And there is a. There's a large forty-eight inch pipe across Techstat Street that we'll be tying into. Um. So flow will be minimal to what that forty-eight inch pipe can handle.
Will there be a, a plan for inspecting that to see when and how often it needs to be cleaned out or how, how does that work?
Um. There, some cities or counties require like a maintenance plan, you know, or whatnot, where you check, but, um. Um, but that, that outfall control structure, which is the manhole with the weir, it will have a manhole lid on it. Where that can be checked at any time. Basically, you pop the lid and, you know, you walk down the steps on it to, um. To maintain that if need be, the system. And then there's also, um, a manhole lid or two. Um, that will tie to the underground system or the parking lot for the same capability to be able to go there and flush it out if nee, if need be.
I mean, we don't have anyone preventing it, so it's such.
I mean, it, it, right, and, and all their drainage will be in full compliance with our, our master drainage.
I need to do. What's, what's his name?
Genovese.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Casey.
Uh, Casey Genovese with Lynn Field Hunter and Junius Engineers.
You got it. With a C with a K.
Uh, C, uh, C A S E Y.
Thank you.
I saw it as K and C.
Okay.
Engineer.
Yeah, all right. So I've got a motion and a second.
Consider, we have a motion and a second approving the recommendation of planning board for approval of the con, conceptual retail store to be located at. Twelve oh seven West Austin Street as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Neopose same sign. Of ocean pass.
Okay, was I?
You got Jim Bob.
All in favor say aye. Neopose same sign. Opposed motion passes.
Same.
Aye, Gary.
Keep an eye on that, Jody, for. Yes, I do, yeah.
That was work. Everybody really needs credit.
We can do.